Specifically open to the public and also accessible via Zoom. Any information is on the posted agenda. Remote public comment is also available for the city council meeting by emailing city clerk at city clerk at CI dot series dot C A U S by five P M. The date of the meeting include the agenda item number or public comment period in the subject line of the email. The clerk may read written comments into the record if specifically requested to do so at the beginning of your email. Your written comment will be distributed to the city council and kept on file as part of the official record of the council meeting. Welcome everybody to the city council chambers Monday, July twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. Call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Council member Rhino here, council member Silveira.
Here.
Vice Mayor Condit.
Here.
And Mayor Lopez.
Here. And today we have an invitation invocation by Tim Genosa. Did I pronounce that correctly? Probably. Thank you very much.
As I begin, let me start by sharing words from the Apostle Paul. He said, the authorities that exist have been established by God. Then in another one of his books, he says, first of all, and I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all who are present, where we may lead a peaceful, quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. So tonight I pray for you, those of you that are in houses in this community. Father, thank you for them. Thank you for our, our council members and thank you for our police and our fire and all those who serve this community, those who are involved in other works and so many that care people of ours. We thank you for them. Thank you that you have been able to leadership as they have. We thank you that you are using them to bring about peace and dignity in this community. Thank you for that. Our love be asked to act in unity. It was the highest wisdom and the greatest good for this. And their leadership under your guidance. So Father, thank you for those who serve, the sacrifices they make and now bless their family so in your name we pray. Amen.
Everybody on Zoom, just want to let you know that we are having some technical difficulties. Are we on?
We're on. For some reason it ticked me off a couple of times. So if people can just be patient, it seems to come right back, but there's somewhat of a destabilized internet connection, I believe.
Okay. So can you hear the audio at least? Maybe we can ask the, ask the public and see. Okay, for now, so we're going to continue with a presentation today. I'm sorry. Today we have a proclamation of the city council of the city of series declaring August third, twenty twenty one as national night out twenty twenty one. Whereas cost less food company Dawn Cool Photography, On Tale Security Services and the Rhino family are sponsoring the city of series national night out. America against crime, drug and violence on August third, twenty twenty one. And whereas the thirty eighth annual national night out provides a unique opportunity for the city of series to join forces with the communities of all fifty states, U S territories, Canadian cities and military bases in promoting cooperative police committee, community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the city of series, the series police department plays a vital role in crime, drugs and violence prevention efforts in the supporting national night out twenty twenty one locally and as whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of series be aware of the importance of the crime prevention program and impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs and violence in series. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, community fellowship, music and games are important themes of the national night out program. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of series council urges all of the city of series residents to join series police department and their sponsors on August third, twenty twenty one at six P M. in Wedmore Park downtown series, north and third street to support the thirty eighth annual national night out. Be it further resolved that the mayor of the city of series and the city of series city council do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August third, twenty twenty one as national night out in the city of series. Council member Rhino would like to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Mayor. I started participating in this about nine years or so ago with Mr. Mc. And I have to say that it is really heartwarming to see how many come out in the community that want to meet public safety and they want to hear about it, but it's just a real family event. And I encourage everyone to come out and I've left some flyers out by the table at the back door. So please, when you leave, pick one up and we hope to see you on August the third.
Thank you. Council members, vice mayor, any words? Thank you. Moving on to citizens communication. By the city, the city council welcomes encourages participation in city council meetings. Adopted rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution number two thousand seven one oh six for expression of the non agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda be addressed by the general public. Our California law prohibits city council from taking any action on any matters which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda items subject to the five minute provision. We're going to go ahead and start off with in person comments. And I believe I do have one yellow slip or Mr. Osgood. Welcome.
Evening. So in just over five months, we're going programs been in place for many years are used waste oil and, and filter pickup that happened with our recycling pickup. I've had the call Berta lot. Today I was on hold for five minutes twice at Berta Lottie phone hung up on me both times. I left a message with city staff. Fortunately, my spouse was able to get through and they picked up the oil and filters. Issue I have with that is if we have to adjust ourselves, why does Berta Lottie not have a training program in place where these men and women operating their garbage trucks? No, they got to get out and pick up that one gallon steel container of oil.
Uh, any emails?
No, Mayor.
No emails.
Hey, Mayor, if we could go back, I get kicked off, so I was muted. So if you could ask if there's anybody on Zoom, I don't know if they could hear us.
Can we get somebody on Zoom just to confirm that you can hear us? Mr. Yakeley.
Mr. Yakeley, I'll unmute your mic.
Yes, your picture, the picture's horrible and Mr. Osgood, we couldn't hear anything of the conversation. It came back to the council and we didn't hear anything went blank. Well, the screen went blank.
Okay, thank you, Missy.
All right, thank you.
What about audio?
Audio was no miss, when Mr. Osgood was talking, you could see him was very blurred. It lasted for a few seconds and then everything went black and there was a circle with a time thing going around and around. But there was no picture for his whole conversation, Mr. Osgood. No picture, no sound.
Very much appreciate that.
Mr. Yukeley, could, Mr. Yukeley, could you hear Mr. Osgood over the audio?
No, only for about maybe five seconds or so, and then it went dead. And then it went blank and there was like an old time circle with a timer going around in a circle with an arrow. But the screen was blank, so we didn't, anybody on Zoom more likely didn't hear nothing.
So now we have somebody who Indy. Dan, do you see that hand?
Your mic. And they'll add your mic again.
Is a dog barking?
Indy, I'm not sure if you're seeing my request to unmute your mic. I'll ask to unmute again.
She's not responding. Okay. Cindy will give you a last opportunity. If you can please unmute your microphone. Okay. Nobody else? The public comment period is now closed. Is there anybody on the council that declares a conflict of interest? All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of all staff will be accepted and acted upon a roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like to send item pulled for further discussion? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Item six, eight, nine, eleven and twelve.
Six, eight, nine, eleven, twelve.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's about it. And a member from the public did request six and nine. Anybody else in the public would like to request any other items? Anybody on Zoom would like to request an item pulled?
Indy still around.
She does, but she's, we've tried. Yeah, counsel.
Move to approve consent calendar, one, two, three, four, five, seven, ten, ten.
Second.
Please get a roll call.
Council member Rhino.
Yes.
Council member Silveira.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit.
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Starting off with item number six, resolution number twenty twenty one seventy six, approving the three year agreement between Elva Gutierrez and the city of series to provide concession services at series River Bluff Regional Park and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. The city manager, this is a, an agreement with someone who's currently contracted with the city, correct?
They had the previous contract for three years, which is now expired. So this would be a new three year agreement.
And did, did we put this out to bid three years ago originally?
Originally three years ago we did, but we did not do that this time.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, Mr. Mayor, for that reason, I cannot be supportive of this. I think having things go out to bid, whether it's someone we have an established relationship like this contract, we should always put things out to bid to try to get the best deal for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, this contract will generate, it's a gross sale receipt contract, so about fifteen percent of the sales, so depends on how much she sells, how much the city will receive.
Council members.
Oh, maybe what the vice mayor getting at that if we went out to bid, somebody might be more, um, they might give the city more than fifteen percent. Is that what you're looking at? Because it's really not about, it's really not about, that's all I can see it would be about, the contract would be, we're not paying them to do it. They're just giving us fifteen percent of their profit. So is that what you're thinking by going out that potentially someone else could give us more than fifteen percent?
Well, I'm really thinking that the habit of not going out to bid, even with folks that you already have a previous contract with, I think that's a bad habit to get into. I, I think going out to bid after a contract is, is the correct process and is something we should do with all of our bids and all of our contracts.
Do you think if somebody has been providing excellent service that we should still go out to bid or are they?
Yeah, just, just like you have to run for office every four years.
Thank you.
Well, Osgood did have this on his yellow slip. It's good.
But just so y'all know, Cooper brings it because I asked, regardless of what the contract is, if we're building this building, if we're doing repairs to the city police station, everything should go out to bid. Conversation I had with Cooper this afternoon was, I don't believe anybody's going to come back with a higher percentage than fifteen percent. I believe we should give this woman her agreement. I believe we're going about it the wrong way. We need to put these things out to bid. Tonight I stand here and tell you fifteen percent as a business owner is probably about all we're going to get out of anybody, but we don't know that. Someone may want that contract. Someone may come in at seventeen. We don't know. We can't sit up there on that dais or right here at this podium and make that determination. That determination comes through a sealed bid process, says, just like everything else we do. We've been doing things a certain way in this town for so long, we've gotten used to doing them that way. That don't necessarily mean it's the right way. It's time we adjusted our behavior and not just on these big things, but the little things as well. Anybody have any questions for me?
Actually, I have a question for Tom. When did the contract expire?
The end of June.
Beginning of June?
The, the end of June, June thirtieth.
I have a question. In the contract, did it stipulate that an extension can be agreed upon?
No, it's just through your term.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel, John Warren. I have a, maybe a question and a comment in regards to someone else in the community get that position over there. Can they just go set up a concession stand at any of our parks and city properties? And get a contract with the city? How do I get that position that that particular person is in over there at Regional? So what I'm saying is I just can't go set up shop. I mean, there's a lot of people in town who do. They set up tents all over our sidewalks and sell their wares. They bend and that's what's going on here. Can I go do that? Yes or no?
I'm, I'm sure that if the opportunity arose.
Can I go to that park?
Yeah, if opportunity arose.
And set up a concession stand? Can I do that?
Finished, so absolutely you could do that if, if the opportunity arose and you wanted to, if the opportunity arose and you wanted to apply.
Can I go over there tomorrow and do that?
No, no, that's not what I'm implying. I'm suggesting that if the opportunity arose and we did open up for.
So you're not.
Wait, let me finish, let me finish. Said if the opportunity arose and we did open up the opportunity for somebody to bid on that agreement, of course she has the three year agreement and now it's coming up to bid. I don't see the damage in or anything to possibly give somebody else an opportunity to do it, but if nobody comes forward to want to do it, I mean, I, we should just give it to her. I just don't want her, I just don't want it to lapse over June and then nobody be there. So.
It's already expired.
It's already expired, so.
It expired in June this year.
Maybe to council member Silveira, maybe we should give her an extension until, if we all agree, if we open it up for bid, just to be fair. I mean, I personally, I've, I've had her for before. It's great.
Believe the last time we did this contract, she was the only person that bid.
And we did open it up for the public?
Yes.
We have done that before.
She was the only person to bid in two thousand eighteen for the contract.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, go ahead, sir.
Aside the point of her being the only to bid three years ago, now we're in twenty twenty one.
That's correct.
Her contract is expired. City staff failed to go. We have a spot on our website says, you know, where we can go get bid requests or requests for prices that's on our website. City staff could have in March, April, May, or even the beginning of June requested prices in a competitive bid process, right? My problem is we did not do that. We should be doing that. Or else why do we have that section of the website? It should be utilized for all contracts with the city, the vending at River Bluff Park, the, the waste disposal pickup with Berta Lottie. We need to stop just giving contracts to people because they've had them, because we've been doing that. We're not, we're not working in accordance with the intent or the spirit of our founding. Everybody should have an equal opportunity to bid on that project. This woman gets the project gratis every three year because we don't put it out to bid. We're not asking for new prices. I stood here before you a few moments ago and said, I believe fifteen percent is probably the best we're going to get. I'm in agreement with, with council member Rhino on that. As a business owner, I'm not going to give up much for my grocery receipts if I were to do that job, but that's not my point. My point is we need to put these things out to bid. Her contracts expired now and here we stand in July with an expired contract and no concession there at River Bluff Park to bring us that money because city staff failed to, to request a price or put it out bid on our website. Right? Perhaps these are things to talk about public comment period as well in the future, but we didn't behave properly at the city. And I say we as a city because it's all of us. It's all of our responsibilities to make sure we give everybody an equal opportunity. That's what we're founded on. Equal protection and equal opportunity and the public's not getting that the way we're behaving with all of our contracts, all of them, not just this one.
Thank you, Mr. Osgood.
Excuse me, Mayor and counsel, if I could. Mayor?
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, and this is not inconsistent with any of the arguments people have made about going out to bid, but the agreement does provide that we could extend the contract without going out to bid and it does continue on a month to month basis until it's either terminated by either of the parties or extended.
Okay. Looks like we're on the right track. What is the council's direction? Council member Silveira, do you have any input on this?
I think Tom said it probably the best. Probably angry to something temporary and then put out the bid. I'll make a motion to extend the contract that we currently are under with her. This person from the community for sixty days and the process put it out to bid.
Second. Roll call, please.
Excuse me, Mayor, and just clarification. Councilman Silveira, so we're going to do two month extension and then put it out to bid?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me out, counsel. Please continue.
Council member Rhino? I have a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Rhino.
So if it was approved as an extension for sixty days and then at that time they're going to put it out for bid, so then they're still going to be.
No, I think we should put it out to bid soon as possible and give her that extension. I mean, that makes more sense, right?
Well, that, that's what I wanted to verify, but it sounded like he said, then we go out to bid and we should be going out to bid and getting the result prior to sixty days or up.
My miss, my motion was to extend it sixty days and in the meantime, put it out to bid.
Sorry, what?
In the meantime, put it out to bid.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, keep, okay. So let's go ahead and get a roll call.
Council member Rhino? No. Council member Silveira?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes three, one.
Moving on to item number eight. Resolution number twenty twenty one seventy seven, approving the improvement agreement and final map for the series, excuse me, Gateway Center final map. Mr. Westbrook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go to Mr. Westbrook. Can you just give us a little background about this project and the potential that it has for this city?
For sure. So a project was originally approved back in two thousand eight with a number of users. It was caught by the first recession and it didn't proceed. The applicant brought it back in two thousand, I believe nineteen, got a reapproval of the project, which includes some kind of restaurant concepts such as In-N-Out, Panda Express, Chipotle. There'll be a couple of others that will be developed within that center. In addition, there was approval for a hotel, which I think had around eighty five room. In addition to two junior anchors, which is kind of like your Pier One Import or your TJ Maxx kind of that size. So when this project is fully developed, it'll bring a significant amount of sales tax revenue in addition to eventual property tax revenue to the city. This is really putting Um, this is really putting themselves in position to, um, sell properties so that the actual, uh, they can deliver lots, so that they can build the projects. And I believe at this point in time, the In-N-Out, um, development plans in terms of their construction documents for the building are in, um, process. And so I think that this is the final step for the Series Gateway Center to get their improvement agreement and their final map adopted, so that they have part sell, and then construction can commence.
Thank you, City Manager, it's great to see the city making strides in economic development. With that, I'll make a motion to approve, approve this item.
Second.
In a roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero.
On to resolution number nine. Resolution number twenty twenty-one seventy-eight, approving the memorandum of the understanding of the M O U for student placement with California State University, status laws, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and resolution twenty twenty-one seven-nine, electing to provide workers' compensation coverage to students interns.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, City Manager, is there going to be an additional cost, uh, to the city to provide workers' compensation?
It's part of our package of workman's comp and covering our employees, it'll be an insignificant cost.
Very minimal cost, nothing?
Yeah, again, until we even get, um, somebody that volunteers as an intern, but it, it'll be insignificant.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. All's good, you, I believe you've had number nine on your health slip.
Yes, uh, twenty twenty-one dash seventy-eight says there's, uh, no fiscal impact, insignificant is not no fiscal impact, insignificant is insignificant. Members of the public might not understand how workers' compensation works. It's not necessarily a package. Right? So we pay, as a business owner, I pay a premium. And in addition to that premium, for every hundred dollars of wages I pay, I pay a percentage of that wage directly to the insurance company every month. My question is, at what rate are we having these interns billed? Doesn't say this in the, in the item, uh, documentation in the agenda, so there's no real way of knowing what the fiscal impact is. Number two. Without knowing that, or what jobs these individuals are doing, there's no real way to, to codify what that's going to be, right? What that charge would be, we don't know what job they're doing, we don't know if they're clerical, if they're out in the field, that's going to change the percentage of, of, of premium addition. Is that how our city policy works?
No, so currently, our workers' comp premium is based off of a payroll, since these positions will be.
Right, I just said payroll.
Correct.
A percentage per hundred.
Correct, since these positions are going to be volunteer, there will no be, there will not be any payroll associated with interns working with.
Then how do we give, grant them workers' compensation? Our, our insurance carrier's not going to say, these interns are going to be this, this rate, and it's going to be this per hundred. So how do we assign a value to their work?
We're, we're self-insured up to a certain point, and then covered by the arm, the Risk Management Authority. The Risk Management Authority will extend coverage to the volunteers if we have a resolution in place stating that we are including volunteers.
Okay, very good. Well, in the future, because I'm a business owner and I do these things without my self-funded insurance, and most of us out here on this side don't, don't have that program. We're, we're looking at things a different way. It'd be nice as the shareholders of the ci, of the corporation that is Series, for that information you just gave us, to, to be in the agenda item, so that we can review that. And we're not coming before the council saying, what of value are we assigning? Because we're looking at it how the real world works. We don't know how it works in a self-funded environment, we don't know how it works with the Risk Management Group. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. All's good. Any, uh, members on Zoom? Looking like anybody?
No hands or face.
Any members of the public? Size? Council? Okay.
Moved to approve number nine on the consent calendar.
Second.
We get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Aye.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero.
Moving on to item number eleven, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eighty-one, ordering the levy and collection of special taxes for official year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, within the City of Series Community Facilities, District number one.
Uh, Diane, before we go back, did we take a vote on item number eight?
Yes, we did, it was four, zero.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah. Vice Mayor, was this one that you pulled, I'm sorry?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just have a few questions here. I would like to start off with, uh, Director Damas. Is our, uh, Director Damas, is our level of service currently meeting, uh, the appropriate level of service to residents? For parks maintenance? As it relates to, uh, staffing for parks maintenance?
For our, for our model for park maintenance throughout the entire city, no, it's not. Um, in relation to the CFDs, I'd have to look at those details, I, I'm, I didn't see the reports yet.
Is there any backlog of, uh, parks maintenance work currently?
Yes, throughout the entire city, yes.
So in the agenda report, it states staff recommend that the resolution be adopted with the new tax rate in order to continue to offer the appropriate level of service to the districts. Director Damas just stated, we're not able to currently meet, uh, inadequate level of service for our residents. I know we have a general plan goal of one point three officers per thousand residents that we aren't meeting. We're, we're not meeting, we're not following through on our commitment to the residents. I don't see any reason why we should go and raise taxes on residents on a select few residents in East Gate and other areas in the city. When we could go renegotiate our twenty-five-year-old property tax agreement with the county, that the county's been dragging its feet on for a number of years now. And just for those who don't fully understand these Melo Root districts, they were formed in nineteen eighty-two by Senator Henry Mello, a Watsonville Democrat, and Assemblyman Mike Root, a Los Angeles Democrat, who created this program as a go-around, Prop thirteen for local governments to raise taxes and raise revenue. I don't agree with it. I think there's other ways to do this, and this is something I simply cannot support, especially when we should be renegotiating our property tax contract with the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any members of the public? Any, uh, we have one.
John Warren, City of Series. Last year, came to the council for a vote. The, uh, the members at the time saw fit not to increase the, uh, the revenue base on these particular districts. And I think the general public and the economy is improving, but there's a lot of folks out there that still need some help. I don't know exactly how much this will increase the property owners' taxes in these particular districts. I think one district's a tax is higher than the other district. And it has to do with value of the, or how it was first established back in the nineties when we did it here in Series. I would encourage the council to consider not raising it again this year, leaving it where it's at, we'll collect the funds that are coming in, and then, uh, and then moving forward, thank you.
Uh, for the council and the public, the CFD increase this year, um, is going up five dollar. CFD number one, CFD number two is fifteen dollar increase.
Mr. Westbrook, would be some benefits from increasing the lease tax? We've already heard Vice Mayor's, wouldn't.
It increases the revenue so that we have, um, funds to pay for operations of the city.
Anybody on Zoom, if I haven't called it already? Email, phone calls? Council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reject items eleven and twelve.
Give a second. Motion dies. Council?
I'll move to approve number eleven on the consent calendar.
I get a second?
Second?
I get a roll call?
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Silvera?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Condit?
Nay.
And Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Motion passes three, one.
Moving on to item number twelve. Resolution number twenty twenty-one eighty-two, ordering the levy and collections of special taxes for official year twenty twenty-one, within the City of Series Community Facilities, District number two.
I would echo my comments again, and, uh, I'll let you open public comment, Mayor.
Yeah, this is the same thing, but District two, correct? Does anybody else have anything to say in the crowd? Zoom? Mr. All's good, would you like to speak, go ahead, sir? Thank you.
Mr. Westbrook mentioned that one district's five dollars and one district's a fifteen-dollar assessment. Uh, could we know as public why there's a difference in assessment cost per unit for each district? I mean, people here in the public are asking for equality, right? And, you know, I, I understand I'm not in, in one of the council districts that, that those, uh, residents are. Uh, their representatives here going to vote on, on that, a tax this evening, but we should know why there's a discrepancy between the two districts. Ten-dollar difference, if we're going to be fair with the people.
Thank you, Mr. All's good.
For sure, when the number one was created, it was back in two thousand and three. Um, there was a, an analysis of the potential cost, uh, to operate service and provide services, and what we would need to, um, to generate, to make sure that we could, uh, provide those services. The council at the time elected to take a smaller percentage, and they didn't accept the full cost at the time. Uh, in two thousand and six, I believe, when CFT two was created, they did that analysis again. And the council at that time elected to implement the full cost, that's why there's two different rate structures.
Okay.
City Manager, just for further clarification. The city has only elected once to not raise these taxes, correct, and that was last year?
Uh, last year, yep.
So once added nineteen years, we chose not to raise taxes. You know, we're, we're still in a pandemic, uh, inflation's rising. Things are still uncertain. You guys know my position, uh, I'm not, not a fan of raising taxes. Especially when it's something that was created directly to spit in the face of Prop thirteen, I just can't support that.
Just to give a little more dialogue on that, so, uh, Community Facilities Districts and Landscape and Lighting Districts, the two difference between these two, the Landscape and Lighting District was created in nineteen eighty-seven and has a flat rate. So what they assumed was going to cover the cost in nineteen eighty-seven doesn't cover the cost today. So our general fund supplements the Landscape and Lighting Districts by about a quarter of a million. So this is different in the sense that it just goes up a marginal percentage year, so that we don't get into a circumstance like the Landscape and Lighting District.
Mr. Westbrook, Mr. All's good.
Both, both districts have the same public work staff servicing them? Whether it's a, whether it's a lighting district or a park or whatever it is, the same city staff taking care of these areas?
Yes.
Okay, so. I mean, I understand why the fees are different, why the taxes are different, that's not the point I'm coming to you guys from tonight. The point is equal and fair treatment, that's in our founding, right? That's what we expect when we're taxed, that we're all taxed equally. I mean, we hear the cries, the ninety-nine percent versus the one percent and the two percent. As a business owner, I pay more taxes than most people in this room. But we got one district that's going to pay five dollars, one that's going to pay fifteen dollars, just because that's the way we've done it, because that's the way we've always done it. How many times this evening has I said that's the wrong way to function? We're going to sit up there, we're going to say, aye, 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 pass the buck. It's time to change how we're doing things. I'm asking for equality for everyone, so we don't have these arguments of the ninety-nine percent versus the one percent. That's why we have these things in this nation, in this state, in this county, in this community, where people feel like they're being treaded upon because they're not treated equally, whether it comes down to one district over the next district, lighting over parks. We're still all paying for the same services regardless of if they come out of the general fund or one of these special districts. Hope my words resonate with you guys. I don't like to raise my voice, but I'm a passionate person, and y'all know that, and we should be treating everyone equal. And pass five dollars to the, pass five dollars to the next one. I don't understand why we're doing it anyway, why any council ever approved it, because I'm in Merle Village, I don't have this. If we can provide for us over there, why can't we provide for them with their equality? Maybe it's time we start looking at things a different way.
Thank you, Mr. All's good. Council?
I'll make the motion that we reject this item.
Dies, no second? Council? Person would make a motion?
Uh, hold on, I'm thinking. So Westbrook, what it take to? First of all, my first question be, before that, I'm sorry. Are they different because of the cost of doing business was different in the both, both times when they were agreed upon?
In the two thousand and three, when the first CFD was created, the total cost with, that was, should have been allocated to those new homes was not assessed by the council. They had one shot to, to make it the same rate, and they elected not to do that at that point in time. When CFD two was created, they saw the error in that, and they charged what they believed was the cost to provide the service. So it's interesting dynamic, right? These new homes, they're the only ones paying this. So homes created before nineteen eighty-seven don't pay the Landscape and Lighting District, and homes before two thousand and three don't pay the CFD. Just a portion of our residents do, one way to get around that is to have a citywide CFD. Then the council considered paying a different rate. Because every parcel in the town would be paying it.
Honestly, I'd like to move this to a future meeting and get some information between now and then. Anybody concur with that?
Second.
I have a question.
I haven't made a motion yet.
Councilmember Rhino?
When you're talking about these districts and it's for homes that were built after nineteen eighty-seven, do all of those subdivisions have the landscape median? Whether it's, you know, down the middle or it's along the side versus the upper neighborhoods that don't?
Generally, in nineteen eighty-seven is when you kind of started seeing the proliferation of, uh, street frontages, maybe where there was a wall backed up and then new light. And so generally, you had that, um, as some aspect. Some of the subdivisions built before the eighty-sevens had houses that faced the street, and they didn't have block walls, so there wasn't necessarily a need for, um, a landscaping district.
Well, that's kind of where I'm going with that. That, and we believe that this money for CFD is really going toward maintaining areas that the older neighborhoods don't have, such as the median landscaping or next to the wall.
It, it's just a percentage, so it doesn't cover the entire cost. The CFD funds, police services, fire services, and landscape services. So what we collect, it's divvied up in between those three divisions within the city.
Thank you.
Well, if the council needs more time, now that we heard the public, it's in, which looks like we're in.
I was under a little bit different impression on how it worked. I would definitely probably want to rescind my motion to number eleven also and look at both of them.
Is that possible, Helen, to bring these items back?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Oh, I'd like to move, to move number eleven and twelve on the consent calendar to a future meeting after doing some research and getting some more numbers of exactly what this incurs.
So just to clarify, if this doesn't get approved tonight, that the, this doesn't get sent to the recorder for the county and applied to the tax roll?
Is our deadline, do we have a deadline?
Yeah, August first.
August first? Hold on one second, John, I'll give you an opportunity to speak. August first, so when's our next meeting?
August ninth.
It's after that.
We have to, I mean.
If we approve it, Mr. Demoss, you may know this, if we approve it after that, is that something that we can add at that point, or what happens? It's just no go for the year?
Correct.
So let's, let's go over this, so district number one, five dollar increase?
It's a five dollar increase. It's gonna generate, uh, this last year, it generated five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and that would increase to five hundred and eighty thousand dollars total.
District number two?
CFD number two generated a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars last year, and it would increase to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars this year.
That, that increases up to fifteen? Okay, and then also talk, we talked about that there's other sections in the City of Series that are not paying this, so it's not across the board. Is that correct?
Correct, so the CFDs were implemented in two thousand and three, so any subdivision, um, uh, that created after that date is subject to these fees. For example, Whitmore Ranch and West Landing specific plan, when they're developed, they will be subject to CFD number three, which is probably gonna be as high as CFD number two, if not higher.
Well, we have three districts?
Ultimately.
Ultimately.
Ultimately, we will.
So is there a possibility, council, if we, I mean, I'm not really for raising taxes, but if we wanna be across the board, we could raise District number one to fifteen and fifteen for District number two, and then possibly, is that even possible?
No, the, there's a percentage that they can be increased. We can't. Yeah, we, we can't select what it's going to be. It has to be on the consumer price index.
Oh, wow. Then that, I mean, you have no control of that. So then the, so it's not really us that are determining the percentage, correct?
No, it's, it's the state and with the.
So it's the state.
So it's the, yeah.
Now, Mr. Osgood, would you like to answer?
Did he have something else real quick?
I'm sorry, Tom, did you, did you wanna say something?
That was me, you heard. I, I was gonna say another alternatives to pass it, you know, as is, like you did last year, and then study it next year.
That's what we're doing. As is at five and fifteen.
No, as is, without that increase.
Without adding an increase.
Other word, not, but we pass these two.
You would keep, at my understanding, you could keep it the same. You could keep it the same, just not with the increase this year, and then study it next year. I think that gets to where you wanna go.
Not losing, I guess.
What happened last year?
Yeah, you still have a shortfall, but it, yeah.
Last year? No?
When it didn't pass, when it didn't pass last year, it just stayed at the current rate. It did not increase.
That's what Tom's saying.
I think the mayor, I don't think the mayor understood.
No, I didn't understand, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, I just wanna make sure that where, where are we at the city going to miss out on this revenue by not passing this?
Then we don't collect twenty-three thousand dollars, an increase of twenty-three thousand dollars attributed to the CFD.
Twenty-three thousand dollars, just on one, total?
That, that's both.
So.
So last year, we collected around six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in CFD payments, the city.
So twenty-three thousand dollars is all we'll be collecting this year?
That's the, that's the increase in that.
That would be the increase, twenty-three thousand dollars. Is that, council, is that even worth? I mean, it's twenty-three thousand dollars, I mean. We do something better next year, but we need to plan ahead.
These two resolutions don't pass, it stays the same, Letitia?
Correct.
One of them already passed.
But we can possibly amend for. Make another, is that possible, to make another motion, resend, to resend?
Can we take them both at once?
Yes, you can do that.
And then to Tom Westbrook, I just wanted to make sure to get your two cents on this. Is that, uh, what are your feelings about that?
I just need to know what I need to study.
Fair enough.
My turn?
Oh.
Thank you. Here again, if this is so important, so important, pay you a lot of money. You make more than I do, and I knew I had something that had to be to the county by the first of August. I'd a damn sure had two months ago in these meetings. These are the failures that happen at this city over and over and over again. Why am I the guy here standing up for us, the owners of this town? Hearing this tonight, hearing August first, I'm telling you, he's gonna quip up like that at the last minute. It's his fault. That's dereliction of duty. I don't need an employee like that. This stuff needs to be addressed sooner, so that not only Mr. Westbrook has a chance to research it, each and every one of my board of directors on that dius does, and everyone in this city does as well. That's poor performance right there. Y'all may stand for it. I'm not gonna stand for it. I'll call him out on it tonight. He gets to get things on the agenda when I have to beg someone to put it on. I have to beg for what we need in this city, and he has the direct line to put these taxes before us two months ago and failed to do so. Fix it.
The report comes from the consultant. We don't get it until June. Historically, this has been approved at the first meeting in July.
Okay, so there's the answer right there, Mr. Osgood. Mr. Osgood, I appreciate you coming on several times. Um, we'll have you speak one last time on this matter.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak again. I know it's not normal seizure. John Warren, City of Series. I think you're contemplating doing something that I suggested when I spoke the first time, and I would encourage you to do that. Take the time, step back, cherish it. It will be a small amount of money in the big pot. You still have the monies coming in that are in place. I believe the increase is gonna be twenty-three thousand dollars, I heard. That's not a lot for the city, but it is a lot. But it will allow the council time to research this, try to fix the mellow root issue here in our city. Probably should be adjusted, and looking forward, uh, maybe even another district. I wouldn't lie, but anyway, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. I know, Vice Mayor, you do have your button looked up, but I just wanted to let the public know that this is why we have done it. If you feel like it's necessary, Vice Mayor, I appreciate your comments. It's gonna happen. We need to make sure that we do the right thing, and it looks like we're gonna do the right thing today. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, with that, I would like to make a motion, uh, for resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eighty-one and resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eighty-two to be tabled for a future council meeting.
If I could, Vice Mayor and Council.
I, uh.
I'm on mute. I'm on mute.
Okay, on the closed session item regarding the city manager, the council gave direction to staff.